Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Genoa Township Board of Trustees' reorganization meeting with January 5th, 2023. Roll call, Mr. Antonetts?
Here.
Ms. Vaughn?
Here.
Ms. Goodman?
Here.
I'm Pat Myers, fiscal officer, called the meeting to order. We have Russ Jabali, our deputy police chief here, Linda Greco, director of human resources, Steve Gamble, our police chief, Bob Matthews, director of roads, buildings and grounds, Joe Ponzi, fire chief, Joe Schaefer, director of zoning and development, Paul Wise, our township administrator, are all here. Lisa Strater is with us, Leslie Strater is with us on audio. At this time, I'd like to ask nomination for chairperson for the board of trustees.
I'll move to nominate Mark Antonetts as chairperson.
I'll second.
Discussion, roll call.
Wait a minute, I wasn't expecting that. So, I appreciate the nomination, but I'm not sure that I'm ready. I'm not sure how I do this. I think I need at least another year. And the time commitment, I just think I would, I think I need more time.
What do we do about that?
I would have that happen. I think you would withdraw and renominate.
All right, I'll withdraw my nomination.
I make a motion to nominate Renee Vaughn as chairperson, retained as chairperson.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Okay. What did I say to that?
Roll call, Ms. Antonetts?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Also like to ask nomination for vice chairperson.
I'll try it again, I'll move to nominate Mark Antonetts as vice chairperson.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Antonetts? Yes.
This time, I will turn the meeting over to the chairperson. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, so at this time, I'll ask our fiscal officer, Pat Meyer, will you lead us in the pledge?
Glad to lead. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move now to public comment. We have a lengthy meeting and we have quite a few people in the audience, so we'll skip to that first. Thank you. Trustees?
Do you want me to lower that?
And fiscal officer, much.
My name is Sarah Walsh and I live at 5618 Austin Grove Drive. I served as a 2022 president and Frank Michelle serves as a 2023 president of the Genoa Township Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association. This nonprofit association was created to support the Genoa Township Police Department and the Genoa Township community. The association voted unanimously at our last meeting in 2022 to donate to the Genoa Township Police Department for the care and support of our new therapy dog Maverick. And on behalf of our membership, I would like to present you with this $250 check.
Very nice. I'm gonna make a motion here in a minute, but the dog is steering the thunder, so we do have therapy dog Maverick here. So I'll move to graciously accept a donation from the Genoa Township's Citizens Police Academy in the amount of $250 for the, what do you call it?
Therapy dog?
Therapy dog, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
From the, thank you.
Genoa Township Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association.
I know, I knew somebody should have wrote that down, because that is a lengthy, thank you, term. So, do I have to second your amendment?
I seconded, well, no.
No, no, we're good.
Okay, I call out a clarification.
Okay, perfect. All right, discussion?
Ms. Antonetts?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Motion carries. Thank you very much for the generous donation, we appreciate it, and for the attendance here this evening. Anybody else for public comment? If you come up to the microphone, we'd like for you to state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Bob Mattis. I live at 5094 St. Andrews Drive, and just west of the community park, kind of in the valley there. I've been a resident there since 1992, and so when I moved in, I was the last house the street ended at my house. And it's been a great community to raise three kids. And for any Genoa Police Department representatives that were around at that time, you may be familiar with my wife. She was the one who stood at the end of the driveway while the kids played in the driveway and rolled tennis balls into the street to stop cars from eventually when it opened up from speeding through. And that was effective, but it took a lot of time, very time consuming. So, we've seen a lot of history in the last 30 years with that road eventually going through the Highland Lakes. And I think the community, and we were very involved in that, really petitioned to have a stop sign placed there. And so, we have a lot of history and we're quite pleased that the stop sign has been effective for many years. We were quite dismayed when we heard that the stop sign was going to be removed, for whatever reason, I don't want to get into that. But to the point where I walked around all the residents of St. Andrews Drive and the circle and to let them know about that and to put together a citizens petition. So I want to present citizens petition tonight, it has 93 signatures on it. These are all people that live on St. Andrews Drive or on the circle and have requested that the stop sign remain intact and to do whatever necessary to make it an official stop sign. Because without it, it'd only become more of a major thoroughfare. We've seen a lot of high volume traffic come through, particularly during times of construction and certainly, you know, with just a lot of people cut through, both at the morning commute and the evening commute. So, I don't know who I should present this to, but 93 signatures requesting that it stay put.
Yeah, our Pat, we'll get it, thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you for your time and your consideration for keeping it there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mike Neal, I live at 5225 St. Andrews Drive, which is two houses up the hill from that stop sign. The, so all of you are hopefully aware, we have one of the bigger hills in central Ohio, right in the middle of that street. And our house happens to be configured such that the kitchen's in the front. So I get a really good view of the traffic going by there every time I'm in the kitchen, eating, or what have you. Over the years, I've lived there since 2011, so we've been there 11 years. And I see, you know, a number of people that are, you know, generally close to the 25, see a lot of people that are like 30, 35, and I see people that are well beyond that. In December there, there was three weeks in a row that I just happened to be out front there and notice somebody coming through there easily at 50. No question, needless to say, they did not stop for that stop sign or anything else. But you've got a lot of kids that live right around that intersection. Some of them little, one of theirs, where Frazier comes out to St. Andrews, you go straight across into a driveway. That house has a toddler. All the houses around the intersection there, they've all got kids, daughters. There's a whole group of girls that live there, got their own little gang and whatever. That's a big safety issue, all the kids playing around there. There's people, we don't have any sidewalks, as you know. People ride their bikes, walk, jog, what have you, up and down there, walk their dogs, whatever, pass there. It's a big safety issue. If we don't have some way of controlling things there, since you can't get the people off the street because there's no sidewalks, you're gonna have a problem. You're gonna have somebody injured, or worse. So, while the county engineer could say, okay, we're gonna take out that stop sign because it's not legal and okay, great, we've done our job, we've complied with the state codes, haven't done anything for safety of people. And that's what's more important than, you know, whether that stop sign meets all the codes or not. So.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cody Ford. I also live on St. Andrews Drive at 5148. I've been there about five years now. And I'm one of the fathers of one of the daughters that Mike was talking about that lives in the family there. My daughter's 11. There's, she's part of that little gang of girls that hangs out there, and there's tons of kids in the neighborhood. But yeah, I just wanted to reinforce the, our importance and need to either keep the stop sign or find a solution that's gonna help. It seems like the county's made a decision what they recommend, but I don't know how much, you know, leverage the township has whether to keep that or whatnot. But I just wanted to reinforce the importance of that, because, you know, I live right there on the other side of the park and, you know, every time I mow my yard, people were driving through there 35, 45 miles an hour, rolling through the stop signs, some people blowing through there. So it is an issue. I know I've had, there's been some Facebook posts from the police chief that having to do with that. I've made some comments there. So, I would like to see more police presence on that area also. I know I see a police cruiser sometimes in the morning when the middle school kids are getting on the bus, but the rest of the time, I don't see a lot of presence there. So I think that would certainly help deter some of the speeding and the stop signs running. But appreciate the board looking into this, appreciate everyone coming tonight for that, so thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Reyno, Dick Reyno, 4884 St. Andrews Circle. I'm the president of the Highland Lakes South Homers Association. We have 117 homes in our association, and I've lived there for 33 years. Fifth house in the whole subdivision. Nice place to live, our kids are all gone, so we didn't have to raise them there. But we understand that the township has made a commitment that the sign will stay there until a solution's resolved, is what we've been told, and we hope that's true. I Googled traffic slowing down yesterday. There's all kinds of messages of slowing down traffic, and I'm sure Mr. Getheart knows all about that. So there are solutions, and we're hoping that, sorry. I put that on, what do you call it? I'm sorry, folks. That was not supposed to happen. Now I am in trouble. Oh, jeez. I don't even, I'll make this quick. The board wrote a letter and you all have a copy of it, I'm sure, to Paul Wise. And we're for keeping the sign until a solution's found for it. And we're confident that Delaware County and the township will come up with a solution that's satisfactory to slow down the traffic. I make a point of going 25 or less, and there's always cars behind me. I mean, they're just having a fit. Who's this old buzzard that's, you know, slowing down my traffic? And I'm Italian, so is Paul. And if you ask an Italian, what are speed limits for, they say suggestions. And that's about how it is, and hardly anybody pays attention to the speed limit. And living there a long time, you can take my word for it. We hope you come up, help us get a solution to the problem. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Trustee Vaughn, if you want, I could have Lieutenant McMillan talk a little bit about our traffic speed enforcement at some point. Particularly, I know we've done considerable amount on St. Andrews.
We will, want to finish public comment and then we'll, that's fine.
Hello guys, my name is Rick Wieland, I'm at 9500 Britton Woods Drive. And I wanted to come here tonight to follow up with a couple issues I've had going on with you guys before. The first one is our road there in Britton Woods Drive. And recently, we had a snowplow truck from the township try to turn around back at the dead end area up there. And he backed off the roadway of the pavement and sunk right down in the mud. Because there's no berm and stuff around the road, and I believe they had to get another vehicle to tow him out of there. So, we need to get this thing addressed or whatever, I know it's been going on, and I've talked to you guys before about it. I don't want it to be strung out, I'd like to see what we have to do. We have to get the county involved here, if we have to get some estimates on what's gonna take to get this thing fixed up. And I know we had some stuff talked to Paul before, as far as the developer up there building some houses where he was gonna fix some stuff, nothing's been done by him so far. People are still moving into the houses he's developed and that type of business and stuff. And the road's still in disrepair in front of each of those houses. So, if you guys can get back to me or whatever and stuff, I can leave you my phone number and that type of stuff. We'll follow up and see what we have to do. But for the beginning of the year here or whatever and stuff, I need, you know, I don't want to go a whole nother year with this thing messing around or whatever and stuff. All the lining, all the striping and stuff on the pavement and stuff has almost disappeared or whatever and stuff up in there and stuff too. There's a lot of other issues and stuff as far as that. But the main one is the lack of, you know, the way the road was put in, you know, faulty by the county and stuff. Now we have to deal with it, so. So that's that issue there. I got another one, I wanted to follow up as far as your zoning resolution, as far as what you guys are doing with that. If you're in the middle of stuff, still on stuff on that stuff, and when we're gonna expect something, some closure on that stuff. I've got a couple customers, I'm in the building industry and stuff, and I got a couple customers interested in building some outbuildings and ones in attached building or whatever that might not come into play here, but they want to actually put like a guest bedroom and stuff in on top of an accessory building type of a thing, which gets into some higher heights and stuff. And I know we've got some issues with the building heights as far as accessory buildings, and I think you guys are addressing that hopefully in a new resolution and stuff. You know, I don't know who changed that during the years, because it used to be a different code, you know, two, three years ago or whatever and stuff, and it got changed or whatever. And hopefully it's going back to what it used to be or something better than what it was, because we're having a lot of problems with it, so. So I'd like to find out a timeline or something on that type of stuff, so I can see as far as planning for some development stuff in the future.
As far as the zoning resolution, we're in the process of working on density first. And once that's finished during the second round, we'll look into other things.
Okay.
But our priority is, I can't tell you how long that'll be. I think the goal is to, the minute we approve the density, whatever is decided, then we'll start the process over.
Okay, who's working on that?
The zoning commission right now.
Zoning commission is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do they have some public, do they have any meetings on that stuff at all?
Joe Schaefer would be able, but I think the last I heard, they were planning on having a public comment either in January, February on density.
Okay, what days do they hold their meetings?
The next one is January 17th, Tuesday, the day after Martin's King Day.
Okay, all right. Well, I can follow up with Joe if he knows that stuff or whatever stuff on that. All right, all righty, and then I'll wait to hear back something on this road.
The last I heard from the road is the county had gotten confirmation from the developer that they would fix the road once the plan was complete.
Well, the developer's not gonna fix the road. He's gonna do a couple patch works in front of some of the areas where he, you know, his equipment and subcontractors tore up the road. That's not gonna fix the road, so to say. That's gonna take care of a bunch of pothole areas and busted up pavement that's laying there because of his construction. So we need to go a little further than this.
For the township to accept the road.
Well, actually, he's, he committed to fix the damages that he caused, which is the edge of the road. So, the road doesn't need repaved or anything like that, it just needs fixed.
It needs, the berm needs fixed on the road. The whole berm has fallen off the whole road up there, Paul.
I think we discussed this the last time you came. I think we discussed this the last time you came in, that yes, that will be done. The developer committed to the county. It's in writing from the county to the board. So it's not gonna, we have to wait till the development's completed. There's no use fixing something that's going to be broken.
That's what we're having trouble with because, excuse me, he has a lot at the end of the development or whatever that's not sold. There's no house built on it. And if it sits there another five years, we're not gonna be able to wait another five years until the developer wants to fix the roads.
I'll reach out to the county and then get in touch with you.
Right. And like I said, this developer's not gonna fix the roads. He's gonna patch some stuff in front of the areas that he's damaged. There's more road damage up there than what the developer caused.
I'll talk to the engineer.
Yeah. All right.
Rick, I know I met with you out there. Is the developer, has his bond been released?
It's gone. They already pulled his bond, used it, they ran out of money, and now they're, you know, down the road, so. Yeah, so he's history on as far as the bond goes and stuff, so.
All right. I'll reach out to engineer's office for clarification, and then I can call you. I have your number.
All right. Can you get back?
I'd be willing to do that, too, if you'd be more comfortable.
Well, you're the engineer. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, it hasn't got any better since you've been up there last time. In fact, it got worse or whatever, so we got...
Maybe we set something up between you and I. I got your contact information.
Sure.
Get him out.
That'd be great. Thanks, Ash.
Anyone else?
My name is Lindsay Gard. My address, 8198 Chateau Lane in Barrington Estates. I attended last month's trustee meeting and made public comment about the stop sign issue. I did request response in writing to my questions, and I did not receive that. So I would again like to request a response in writing to those questions. The trustee comment afterward did not suffice and actually only left me with more questions. If it's required that I submit those questions in writing, I don't know if that's the requirement. I'm happy to do so. I also, you have my address, but I will also leave my contact information, more contact information so that I can be sure I can get those responses from you. I would again just like to reiterate my support for keeping the stop signs in place. I don't really have anything else to say that I didn't say last month, although I would like to make the recommendation to the trustees, you yourselves, please take your cars and drive these streets. And specifically in my neighborhood, I would request that you drive down Dunaway approaching Springview and let me know how comfortable you would feel turning left on Springview without a stop sign there with people coming down Springview out of Highland Lake or out of Harvest Wind, cutting through our neighborhood. There's a curve actually coming from both directions approaching that three-way stop. And I already know at Chateau in Springview, I hesitate every time I'm turning left because people are flying down Springview. So without a stop sign there, again, I know it's not necessarily to control speed, but I just am asking, you know, I would like to know how comfortable you would feel turning left with people coming around that curve, knowing that they no longer have to slow down for a stop sign or have any kind of stop. Because I certainly don't feel comfortable, I wouldn't feel comfortable turning left there, and I certainly will not feel comfortable sending my children across the street to go play at the park once the stop sign is removed, so.
Thank you.
I would just also like to say on the topic of communication, I would also like to make the recommendation that when topics and issues like this arise, that that communication is maybe a, more specifically from the township itself and maybe not through personal email from different trustees that only go to people who have subscribed to those emails. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Paul Keen. I live at 6861 Spring Run Drive. I'm here just to comment about the thought of removing the stop signs. I know it's, I haven't heard what the final decision is yet on removing stop signs from Dunaway and Spring Run Drive. But I can tell you, I've lived in that development for 25 years. And if those stop signs get removed, wow, that is gonna be a mess. Try pulling out of my driveway, okay? Because there's a curve in the road, so when I come trying to pull out, I can't see who's coming in to Barrington Estates, okay? And if there's no stop sign down there, down at the further end at Dunaway, people are just gonna blow right through it, especially people coming out of Harvest Wind. There's no stop sign there, and I try and pull out of my driveway. Before I know it, I'm gonna have somebody in my trunk. It's really gonna be a bad thing. I'm just wanna, I just wanna just kinda state that for the record. You know, if you guys, if the decision's made to remove those stop signs, there's definitely gonna be an accident. I have no doubt about it. I mean, I appreciate the fact that you've got the speed signs up there and really appreciate that. I hope it stays. It's done some good, but removing those stop signs, especially for me, for folks coming out of Harvest Wind, trying to get out of Barrington Estates, that's gonna be an issue because there's nothing to slow them down. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Rob McConahey. I live at 6874 Hillmar Drive. And I wanted to talk about the stop signs and a few other things. Before I get started, I'm thinking about what I wrote, and I want to apologize to the officers. I know that you're hard pressed sometimes to get around to all the places. And I know it can be hard to get to all the places you need to be. In regards to removing the stop signs on Hillmar Drive, the first thing I'd like to say is that while the signs may have been put in place in opposition to state regulations, I don't know why there should be any rush to remove them. They've been in place for about 20 years with no negative consequence and a lot of positive results. I spoke with the Delaware County engineer who informed me that per state statute, in an eight-hour time period, there must be at least 300 cars on the main road and 200 cars entering from the side street to necessitate a stop sign. There's no mention of type or weight of vehicles, what times the eight hours includes. It seems clear that the state statute needs to be amended to either include both morning and evening rush hours or to account for larger vehicles like school buses and delivery vehicles or to allow for exceptions like schools being located within a certain distance of the intersections in question. I can certainly reach out to our state representatives in an attempt to get the law amended, but not to, but I don't wanna interfere with any efforts on your part. I read with interest the report that 22 stops were made on Mount Royal from May through September. Frankly, I applaud the bravery of reporting that number as I find it ridiculously low. Per the Delaware County engineer's study, there are at least 300 cars in an eight-hour period per day on Mount Royal. I suspect that number is much higher. But at 300 cars a day, that's 64,200 cars minimum in that timeframe. There were 22 stops that were made or 0.003% of the 64,200 cars. I can tell you from experience on my frequent walks on and near Mount Royal, at least 10% of the cars exceed the speed limit by a significant amount, not to mention running stop signs and active crosswalks. Far more should be done in regards to traffic enforcement on Mount Royal and Hillmar Drive, and I'm wondering why more isn't done in regards to enforcing existing traffic laws. In regards to school buses, I think the kindest thing I can say is that the Westerville School Transportation Department is simply not interested in being a good neighbor. The buses weigh about 16 tons and start arriving on Hillmar at 7:00 a.m. They emit about the same noise level as a lawnmower, roughly 85 decibels, more when they're going faster. The feedback from the transportation department that the buses have GPS and when checked, the buses are not speeding, simply cannot be true. Either the GPS is not calibrated correctly or I'll be blunt. The transportation department is lying or interpreting on their own what speeding is. All you have to do is watch them go by my house, and you can easily see buses that exceed the speed limit. I've asked Randy Snyder why the buses, at least the empty ones, can't be routed on Maxtown and Tusick, and his response is either the roads are public domain, they can drive where they want, or they would have to turn left into Central High School instead of right. He compared the buses to UPS trucks that follow the same logic. It's a convenient argument for him, but hardly a valid comparison. My own grandson was being driven to Alcott School this week, and the boy's father called in a complaint to the transportation department because a school bus tailgated him all the way to the school from Maxtown Road. My grandson stated to me that it scared him that the bus was following so close. Will there be any effort on the part of law enforcement to enforce the legal speed limit and safe driving practices of the school bus drivers? There appears to be no effort now. There is a speed limit sign at Hillmar and Tusick. It also says that the speed will be strictly enforced, and it's not. What are the future plans for the traffic control and/or speed mitigation on Hillmar Drive and Mount Royal? The police department has stated that excessive speed is the number one complaint in the township, yet little seems to be done about it. Can school buses be kept off of Hillmar Drive if they aren't required to be on Hillmar for pickups and drop-offs? Can we request that non-essential school traffic be kept off of Hillmar Drive? As a resident who is impacted by speeding and wrecked drivers of all vehicles, I'm appalled by the lack of enforcement on the part of our police department. I'll wrap up by citing an example of effective enforcement. Drive west on Main Street from Cleveland Avenue. The speed limit is 25 miles per hour. You will see very few drivers exceeding the speed limit, and you know why? Because Westerville Police Department enforces the speed limit, and people who use the road know they enforce the speed limit. And I invite any of you to come by and sit on my front porch, starting at 7:00 in the morning or when school lets out, even at noon when kids are going out to fast food for restaurants. Come on down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment?
Good evening. Carl Gephardt, 6796 Regency Drive. First, I'd like to commend Bob, your crew, as usual during our snow that we had and ice and all that nastiness. Also, the first responders. I know, Steve, I saw some of your folks out helping people out of the ditch. And, you know, that's, that's why people love living here. The services you guys provide, I appreciate that. I see that on the agenda is the Stop Sign Survey Result Discussion, and I appreciate the fact. I'll be interested to see how that turns out. I also hope that there's some, maybe some discussion regarding the Attorney General's opinion that I spoke about. And Mark, you were mildly interested. I'll take that, and I appreciate your interest in that. I do have some other information relative to that. Granted, that has put the townships, I think, maybe even in an awkward, more awkward position because, you know, AG's opinion is pretty significant, to be perfectly honest. It's not law, but it is, it is better than what Paul Wise and I can come up with most of the time from our legal knowledge. I did talk to the county prosecutor in Summit County, and he was personally, he was surprised that the opinion came down the way it was, but he said, yes, in fact, the townships can install on township roads traffic control devices, of which a stop sign wouldn't be included. I also have the minutes from the meeting and that was where that was done. And it not only was a stop sign, but there were no left turn signal or signs and other signs that have been erected. I talked to the administrator in Copley Township, and she advised me that, yes, it is, was done. It's done in a residential area. The concern I expressed about our law enforcement, our police being concerned about being able to enforce because they allegedly were improperly installed. She said that since the township took action, they did approve that, the installation of the stop signs, which also meet the other criteria within the traffic control manual or the manual that the county engineer goes by, that they have traditionally have issued warnings for people who do go through those stop signs. Now, because they're in residential areas, it's usually the same people that they find going through those stop signs. So after about two or three times warnings, they do get cited. But they aren't out just writing tickets for people going through these signs. So, but she said, since those signs have been put up and since the tickets and warnings have been written, they have had no court challenges by any of the residents regarding that. So it may not be perfect, but I hope we don't let good get in the way of perfect. I think it does provide an avenue that is worth investigating. And like the gentleman said before, maybe there are some changes that need to be made in statute, not only with this, but I think Paul and I had talked about, I mean, when you look at the townships, section of the Ohio Revised Code, it's antiquated. And when you're trying to deal with 1,300 townships in Ohio, all of which have different factors, different populations, issues, it's hard to make a cookie cutter statute to fit all of these townships. So maybe there does need to be some revisions made to that, and maybe our new state representative can focus on some policy issues and get some of that made. In closing, I just encourage you to continue to look at options. These are traffic control devices. The speed issue is a separate issue. Yes, there are alternatives, but I think the alternative that is there now, the stop sign, is good. And maybe in some situations, there are some added devices, maybe crosswalk signs, signals, whatever, that could be instituted or implemented that would even add to the safety of some of those neighborhoods. So anyhow, I conclude, and I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Lieutenant McMillan, would you like to come up and address some of the speed enforcement?
Evening, board. So the chief asked me to come up, since it's been brought up a couple of times tonight, to talk about our directed patrol programs because how we try to go about tracking complaints and monitoring data for speed enforcement when necessary. What I'm gonna talk about tonight is separate from our standard patrols. The officers are out on patrol for their shift, and as part of their duties, it's to do neighborhood patrols. But what we try to do and what we do do is depending on where we're getting complaints, and we get them via phone, and the website has a place where people can file complaints and compile that data to determine when and where some of these complaints coming in. And then what we'll do to try to mitigate that and monitor it is we do have our speed, our speed electronic measuring devices, the electronic signs that you hear people talk about. We'll put them up, which is also monitored and through the internet. So we get real-time data, live data coming back to us. And it'll tell us the average speed overall for an hour and the 24-hour period. So it breaks it down between hourly and 24 hours. High speed for that hour, the amount of traffic per hour, and it'll do that same thing for 24-hour periods. So we'll try to use that to help us determine along with the complaints, when and where do we need to be and have the officers come in. And then what we'll do on a separate, on a separate data tracking is the officers are required to do directed patrol, neighborhood patrol every day of their shift. Again, that's outside of their normal patrols. The officers will go there. They, we ask them to go for an hour, but we know that calls come in, higher priorities come in, so they have to leave. So we'll tell them anything less than a half hour does not count as a directed patrol. So they go there for 10 minutes and say, well, I didn't see any cars speeding. They're not allowed to count that. They gotta be there for at least a half hour. They monitor, once again, rough number, the amount of cars they see, the high speeds, and then their stops. So when we give out data on Mount Royal that over the past X number of months, we've made 22 stops, that's based on what the officers are observing. So they'll put down there their high speeds, the amount of speeds, and then they'll make their stops. And then they'll throw decide warning or citation. We keep that tracked. Once again, it's an internet tracking device. We do that. We compile it monthly, annually, and that helps us track where it is. It's not perfect, but that's, that's what we're doing to do that. So I log in, plus the road sergeants log in several times a month, and we'll look and see if St. Andrews is not getting worked or Hillmar or all the, you know, farms. There's all kinds of them. And if we see that one seems to be neglected, we'll shoot out an email to the road supervisors and ask them to be in there. So generally speaking, they all get work multiple times a month along with their normal neighborhood patrols. So that's some of the stuff that we do try to do to help mitigate and track some of the complaints that we're getting.
Very good. Thank you.
I just want to add the overall picture. First, I fully understand the concerns and complaints of all the residents that spoke. It really comes down to a numbers issue. Typically, we have three to four officers out on patrol to patrol the 21 square miles of the township, and they're taking calls for service, taking accident reports. of the township, and they're taking calls for service, they're taking accident reports, they're doing a variety of duties, along with doing the traffic enforcement, and it comes down to, we just don't have enough officers to cover every neighborhood that we're getting complaints on. The number of complaints for speeding in neighborhoods that Lieutenant McMillan has in his spreadsheet vastly outnumbers the number of officers we have at any given time, so we have to try to be strategic on where we go. Clearly, we try to hit the school zones very, very hard, both in the morning and the afternoon, but I absolutely wish I had more officers to put out on traffic enforcement, but absent increasing staffing to a large degree, we just don't have the numbers to do that. But, you know, we're going to continue to do our best as we can, and to work with any neighborhoods as we can to come up with any kind of plans and try to help improve safety in their neighborhoods.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the rest of our meeting. We will have an update on the stop sign in the Maintenance Department. So next, we will go into our reorganization. So I'll move, there's a resolution for the Township 2023 reorganization. I will move that the day and hour of the regular trustee meetings for 2023 of the Board of Trustees be held on the first Thursday of the month at 6:30 PM. All meetings will be held at 5111 South Old 3C Highway, Westerville, unless otherwise announced. Do I have a second?
Second.
Whoever you want. Kay Goodman?
I also
Yes, go ahead.
Clarify that we will still hold, even though it's not part of the motion, still hold the third Thursday in case a second meeting is needed for any reason?
Yes, thank you. Discussion?
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we have township policies. So I'll move to retain the following policies: the Genoa Township Personnel Policies, the current police manual and regulations, the Fire Department Policies, SOGs, directives, protocol for medical alarms, and emergency policy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I believe that was employment policy, not emergency policy.
Oh, thank you.
You might want to amend.
Yes, I'll amend it to employment, not emergency. Roll call.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Next is 2023 employment policies. I'll move to establish the following employment policies for 2023. The health insurance with vision, dental, life, and disabilities benefit for full-time employees, part-time employees, regularly scheduled for and working at least 1,560 hours per year, and all elected officials with a $150 per month co-pay for family coverage, $100 per month for employee with children, $100 per month for employee and spouse, and $50 per month co-pay for single individual coverage. Number two, no individual is permitted in the fire, or police, fire, maintenance, and administration buildings in the restricted areas except for employees of the township or as authorized by department leaders. Number three, use of tobacco products is prohibited in all township buildings, grounds, parks, and vehicles. Four, overnight, overtime will be approved and documented by the administrator or department leader. Number five, employees required to attend meetings on their off-duty days will be compensated at their normal hourly rate. Salary employees will not be compensated. Do I have a second?
Second, and
Discussion?
Yeah, it was off-duty hours, not days.
Number five?
Five.
Okay, thank you. So I'll amend my motion.
And I will resecond.
Thank you. Discussion, roll call?
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we have an Ohio Public Employees Retirement System and the Ohio Police and Fire Compensation Plan contributions. So I'll move to make contributions to the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System and the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Plan for 2023 based on current Ohio law. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Next is the Maintenance Parks and Buildings and Grounds Department Uniform Policy. So I'll move to set the 2023 Maintenance Parks and Buildings and Grounds Departments clothing and boot allowance for all full-time and part-time employees. Replacement will be at the sole discretion of the director. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Next, there's an employee compensation resolution. So I'll move to approve Exhibit 1, 2023 Elected Officials and Employee Compensation as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to compensate members and alternatives of the Zoning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals for 2023 at $60 per meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I believe that should be, it should read "per meeting attended" as a clarification that the member must be in attendance.
Okay, thank you, good call. So I'll amend the motion to say "per meeting attended"?
And I will second.
Thank you.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. On to other business. There's a resolution to appoint to the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission. So I'll move to appoint Joe Schaefer as the Genoa Township Representative to Delaware County Regional Planning Commission for 2023, and Susan Dorsh and Paul Benson will serve as alternates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we have, should it be 2023 Volunteer?
Yeah.
Fire Fighter Dependents Fund Board appointment. So I'll move to appoint the following to the Volunteer Firefighter Dependents Fund Board for 2023. It would be the Board Chair, which would be Renee Vaughn, and the Board Vice Chair as the Secretary, which would be Mark Antoinette, and also Brady Johnson, Joe Ponzi, and John McHale. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Next is the appointment to the Board of Health, or the Health Board. So I'll move to appoint, it should be the chairperson, which would be Renee Vaughn, as the Genoa Township Representative to the Health Board for 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Next, I'll move to reimburse employees the IRS standard mileage rate for all employees and elected officials for business use of a personal vehicle. It must be approved by appropriate department leader. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, is this just for the year? Because this changes every year.
Yeah.
So this will just be for 2023?
Yeah.
Okay.
Each year, the same motion's entered each year, we use the given rate for that year.
Right.
And even if it changes mid-year, that motion would take care of that.
Okay.
Roll call?
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to retain the Township Community Hall fees for 2023 on file in the office and on the township website. Do I have a second?
Second.
I did look it up before the meeting. Currently, the Township Hall rents for $150 with a $250 deposit.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to retain the unchanged Township Park Shelter rental fees for 2023 on file in the office and on the township website. Do I have a second?
Second.
Again, I looked it up. All of the shelters are $25, except for McNamara is $30. Roll call?
Mr. Antoinette?
Is there any discussion allowed on that?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah.
I would really, we talked for the last year at least
Yep.
About that being extremely low for the amount of usage that our parks get. I think we really need to think about that, and I thought we were going to discuss it at this meeting.
Oh, okay. I can tell you that the Parks Committee discussed it, I can't remember which month, but it's been this fall, and they chose not to increase them, if I remember correctly.
Did they give a reason?
They talked about not charging more for outside people because they were saying that if somebody outside the township wants to rent it, they'll find somebody who lives in the township to rent it for them so they can pay less. We don't have a ton of organizations coming in and renting it, but then I don't think that was, I don't think they voted, or, do you remember how that conversation went, Bob?
You said about right. They really didn't want to raise it because they thought they ought to keep them the same. Is it because rentals were not that big a deal for businesses and organizations?
We don't get a whole lot of them.
No.
Yeah, I don't think that was the question that I was asking. The concern that has been expressed previously is that McNamara is extremely hard to get into for $35, and it is, you know, literally twice the shelter as Freeman, or more than some of the others. So the question is, is $35 the right amount for McNamara Park? And it has nothing to do with resident, non-resident function you're going to do there. I'm bringing up the point because it has come up in the past.
Yeah, I think I have mixed feelings because taxpayer dollars paid for the shelters. The parks levy pays for the parks, and then you're going to charge the residents more to use what they've paid for. So that's why I think it's a fair price. I think we should charge something because it is wear and tear on the facility, but it is there for the residents, and they did pay for it. So, I mean, again, I could go both sides.
Well, I'm bringing it up for discussion.
Yes, I think it should be a nominal fee. I don't think it should be an astronomical fee.
Do we know what the revenue is from that?
I don't have that figure right now.
Four figures? Five figures? It's not huge.
No, I mean, like Connie said, what we did, I think I did talk to Chrissy about what is used, how often these facilities are rented. McNamara is first to go. It's rented almost every weekend from, you know, the time the weather gets nice until it isn't, and then Freeman is next. But there is a significant gap between the amount of times Freeman is used versus McNamara. And it might be half the amount of time.
McNamara Park is rented 200 days a year, it'd be $7,000.
I was going to say maybe 5,000 per year.
Yeah, it's not much.
Is that, is that 25 is just a deposit?
No, they don't get it back. It's a day, they get it per day.
They get it for a whole day.
And it's 35 at McNamara, right?
I thought it's 30, yeah. I thought I looked it up, it's 30.
But there's also no deposit required on these.
Yeah.
No.
You do any damage, we have no deposit, so.
I'm in favor of a deposit, I think that makes sense, just to protect ourselves if something gets damaged.
And that also means more paperwork for Bob's staff.
Yeah.
So, the refunding and so forth, and in fact, the admin office for the refunding.
But how does that work for?
Problem with the deposit for damage is that the parks are wide open, so if their party's done at 4:00 and the damage is done at 5:00, then there's really no secured building that we could go back and say, you look at the hole in the wall or whatever, so that's probably why that was done that way.
Unless you send someone over every time the party ended, but then you're paying that person.
But you're not, right, right.
I don't mean to create an issue where there's
No, no, that's okay. So what is the feeling of keeping it the same? I'm okay increasing it, but I wouldn't want to increase it much.
Oh, no, I wasn't thinking of a phenomenal increase. In fact, the 25 for, the smaller parks seem fine, and McNamara is the one that I question. A $5 difference, I just don't think that that's a lot when you're looking at the difference in the quality of the park.
Mm-hmm.
How long have these fees been in place?
Long as I can remember.
About an increase?
No increase.
I can't remember, I think McNamara was just in the last few years it went up to 30, didn't it? But before then, it was the same very low, $20 or $25 forever.
Yeah.
And I see your point, too, about the voters paid for, you know, a parks levy, so they're taking a little bit of their taxes, so this is a give-back for them for passing our park levies, which is up this year, so.
We don't charge more for non-residents?
On the website, it says $75 for non-resident, but again, I think that
They get around that, they have somebody
The word can change on that, right? Our standard fee is 75, if you live in the township, you get a discount.
Yeah.
That way, you're not charging residents, people that are residents.
Yeah.
That's what the Westville Rec Center will tell you, oh, we don't charge you more. We just charge our residents less.
Okay, I like the strategy.
If the answer is to leave it as it is, I'm fine with that, but I did commit to a number of folks to bring this up for discussion.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, I think I'm okay leaving it this year. I mean, we'll discuss it again next year. Anybody else?
Fine.
Okay. You're good? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll move to approve the Genoa Township Park Rules and Regulations for 2023 on file. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
I'll move to set cemetery fees, per cemetery fee schedule for 2023 on file. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like Bob's input on
Okay.
These adequate?
Yeah, because they're adequate. We don't have any plots left, so only thing that we would be changing is opening and closing, and that's fair now. It's 350 during the week and $500 on weekends.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll move to approve the zoning fees for 2023 on file in the zoning office and on the township website. Do I have a second?
Second.
Again, I would ask Joe
I was waiting.
If he could keep it under a half hour. There is a big game on. No, I just, seriously, I don't know if your fees, if you feel like your fees are competitive and adequate to cover your costs?
I mean, we never make money in the zoning department as far as that's concerned, but I haven't evaluated them lately, but I haven't had any kind of thought of needing to raise them.
Developers complaining?
No.
Okay, it's too low.
I can't say I recall anyone really complaining. I think we're pretty fair and consistent with the area.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to approve the zoning forms for the two thousand and twenty-three, for two thousand and twenty-three on file in the zoning office and on the township website. Do I have a second?
Uh, I'll second.
See, it's censored names there.
Again.
Yeah, he wants to come, input.
Your form?
On the forms, yeah. So basically where we stand with the forms is this is basically just a formality that acknowledging that we use them and continuing allows us to use them. I believe a while back we had the discussion, uh, we being the board and myself, that the board was no longer interested in me bringing the forms back to you every time I needed to add a comma or make, really make any revisions because it's, it's really just all ministerial documents, um, administering the zoning resolution that you, um, you know, I can always bring them back to you and show you all the changes and we continue to adjust them as we feel is necessary to get, um, better applications and get what we need. But I, it just seems like it's, we're moving away from that direction where I feel like the board is flying at that low on stuff for the better. So, um, I'm happy with them.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. That's why we're giggling. All right, uh, I'll move to approve the two thousand and twenty-three pay period schedule on file in the fiscal office. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to allow the fiscal office as needed to make supplemental appropriations within a fund at the legal level of control on the UAN accounting program. All other transfers require approval by the Board of Trustees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Pat, you want to explain that a little bit?
There are just times that we have to, we, we appropriate our money and there are times where we have to reappropriate, move money with any fund, not outside a fund to another fund. And we have to, it gives me the ability to do that, but we still bring every one of those to you for review and vote. So it's just if a fund runs low for some reason, we have additional money here, we can move the money within the fund.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Still bring all this to the board.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move, the fiscal office of Genoa Township is hereby authorized and directed to request the Delaware County Auditor to draw a warrant for an, an advance of tax monies collected on behalf of said township, but not yet dispersed pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section three, two, one, point, three, four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets? Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move that the annual salaries of the Genoa Township trustees and fiscal officer be paid equally, equal monthly payments in accordance with the O R C Sections five oh five point two four and five oh seven point oh nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets? Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to approve the annual township highway mileage certification of ninety-four point three nine four miles for two thousand and twenty-three.
No, twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two?
That's accurate.
All right, twenty twenty-two.
We don't get the rest, we don't get the new mileage from the state until after, I think it comes in February, late February. So that's actually, actually.
Okay, all right. So, uh, for two thousand and twenty-two, this compares to ninety-one point nine six miles in two thousand and twenty-one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets? Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, before we get into this next part, do you want to have a discussion on whether we're okay with staying with the committee that we were put on last year?
I like Joe Ponzi a lot, so. I think I'll stay. No, seriously, I mean, I get a ton of valuable information from Joe and I appreciate it, uh, transparency. Um, and I just think, and I'd get more value in another year. So I, I, I wouldn't mind staying on for another year.
I, I know last year I'd said I'm kind of in favor of rotating yearly, but now I've only been in parks a year. I'm okay staying another. I don't know how you feel.
I have police and communications. I like both of them. I've been on the other committees, but if you two are staying, I guess I'm keeping.
Well, I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm open. That's why I wanted to have this conversation.
No, I'm happy to do both of them.
Okay, all right, very good. So.
But I would like to see us rotate a little bit more going forward. I think for trustee Antonets especially, it will be helpful for him to touch base with some of the other committees and learn more about them.
I agree.
Absolutely.
Uh, yep, okay. So we're all on the same page. All right. So I'll move to appoint Renee Vaughn as the trustee representative to the Parks Advisory Committee for two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Connie Goodman as the trustee representative to the Police Advisory Committee for two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Mark Antonets as the trustee representative to the Fire Rescue EMS Advisory Committee for two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Connie Goodman to the trustee representative, as the trustee representative to the Communications Advisory Committee for two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. So that concludes the reorganization section of this meeting. At this point, we do have other items that have come before the trustees that we need to address this evening. So we'll start with the fiscal officer report and I'll turn it over to Pat Myers.
Thank you. Uh, just a few things for you tonight. First of all, the financials for, uh, end of month, November reconciled. Just a balances of twenty-six million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. Um, investment accounts are twenty-one million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-four cents. And the primary account of four million, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Everything's cleared, no outstanding items, and I'll have that for you review and signature. Next, I have, um, oh, roll one, there we go. Have some purchasers I need approval for. Um, we make our annual HSA deposit for employee, um, health savings accounts that deposit been made. Then and now purchase order to Prairie Estates for medical expenses and then a blanket purchase order for metal expenses of thirty-six thousand dollars.
All right, I'll move to approve the following purchase orders. The HSA accounts, employer annual deposits for seventy-seven thousand dollars. Then and now purchase to Prairie State Medical Expenses, sixty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents and a blanket purchase, uh, uh, yeah, blanket purchase order for medical expenses for thirty-six thousand. Do I have a second?
Second.
Question? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets? Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Um, next I ask for the annual purchase orders and blanket certificates approval. Uh, we would ask for approval of our annual purchase orders for services and so forth and as well, our blanket certificates, um, that we put in place for non-specific purpose, but the ability to, uh, get things known within, non-specific vendor, but specific purpose. So, um, that's seven million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I'll move to approve the two thousand and twenty-three annual purchase orders and blanket certificates as presented in the amount of seven million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-eight cents effective January one, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, could you just give a brief explanation of that very precise number down to twenty-eight cents?
We appropriated that exact amount in the, um, in the blanket purchasers that we've given to you. Some of them are very specific, certain amount, some are, some are blankets for non-specific vendors, but services. And that list was provided and that's what the number came out to for everything. Administration, um, annual purchase orders, annual blankets, zoning, all the different, it, it's anything from American Electric Power, Columbia Gas, so, so that money's there to pay the bills.
Anything else? Okay, roll call?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Approve, I, I need some approval for the retroactive approval of, um, some two thousand and twenty-two supplemental appropriations for the end of the year here. Um, so we're, again, as you mentioned earlier, supplement appropriations, we do to, when a fund's low, we can move some money. We did this at, at the year end. So, uh, I just, as presented there, there's.
Okay, I'll move to retroactively approve the the two thousand and twenty-two supplemental appropriations as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
And then one more approval of the two thousand and twenty-two permanent appropriation, it's amendment. Hundred thousand dollar amendment for the self-insurance fund and employee fringe benefit fund.
I'll move to approve the two thousand and twenty, is it two thousand and twenty-two, permanent appropriation amendment in the self-ins, self-insurance fund, employee fringe benefits in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Thank you, okay.
Can I have a minute?
Yep. Yeah.
I don't know.
Are you doing sign discussion now?
Do what?
Are you doing sign discussion now? Stop sign discussion, is that next?
Oh, um, I guess.
The only reason I say that's.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We could do that. You want to go ahead and give us an update on the stop sign, the R E A?
Yep, just for the general public, um, this evening, the, um, the township.
We're, we're still going. We're still going.
The township had been, uh, waiting on one final R E A. That was on spring run.
We're still having a meeting. If you could hold it down or take your conversations outside, thank you.
The township is still waiting from the Delaware County Engineers Office to perform the last R E A that is located at Spring Run and Dunaway. We have not received anything yet. I'm sure there's probably a holdup due to vacations, et cetera, from the holidays. So as soon as we get those, the next meeting, we'll present that to the board for their action.
So in short, we're in holding pattern?
We're in holding pattern at this time.
Still waiting game, okay. All right, I'm going to move on. Um, so the next, we have a memorandum of understanding, an M O U, for Article fifteen point one wages in the International Association of Firefighters Local Number forty-three oh seven. So I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding Article fifteen point one wages as presented, increasing annual salaries and hourly rates from two percent to three percent effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Do we wait?
If I, maybe I'll add a point of discussion.
Go ahead, go ahead.
A quick comment here. Raising this, the union contract did say two percent. This will raise the, the rate to three percent in appreciation for all that our, um, officers and, and fire folks, whichever one we're on right now, has done. They're going to come, both come eventually.
Yes, yeah, this is fire.
This is fire, so.
All right, roll call?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes or no?
What's the question?
Two of, this one.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on. Next, I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding Article fourteen point one wages as presented, increasing annual salaries and hourly rates from two percent to three percent effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets? Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
And carries. I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding Article fourteen point one wages as presented, in- increasing annual salaries and hourly rates from two percent to three percent effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonets?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Next, I'll turn it over to zoning and.
I'll do that.
You're going to do that? Okay, I'll turn it over to Paul Wise. Yeah.
I might have missed something, but did we, would we do it this stop sign survey result discussion?
We.
We gave a head, uh, an update on the spring run in Dunaway, which we're still in a holding pattern because we have not received a decision on the R E A that we submitted.
Okay.
All right.
Trustees, um, we had a request from the, the attorney who worked for Epcun. He had sent the prosecutor a message and asked that the board look at rehearing that case since he believed that there was a potential, uh, conflict of interest with trustee Vaughn. We had taken care of that question far before that hearing, um, whether or not trustee Vaughn's participation should be involved or not. Our prosecutor sent an opinion that there's no conflict of interest because, uh, Renee lives beyond the five hundred foot notification line of the board, of all the residents who are notified that are around, um, developments. So the prosecutor requested that at least we ask the question again since the, since the attorney for the applicant asked that, does the board want to hold another hearing, um, for this reason? And so if you, the board would make a decision this evening?
Any thoughts? I'm not in favor.
I'm not, I don't see any point in it.
I'm not in favor either. I, I don't believe that there would be any, anything new presented by the applicant. And I think it could, um, set an undesirable precedent going forward for other, um, cases. So I would say no.
So I'll pass on it, the consensus of the board, unanimous consensus is that there be no other hearing be held for that zoning case. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. All right, m- maintenance. I'll turn it over to Bob Matthews.
Our brim truck is, uh, nineteen eighty-nine or ninety-one. And it's all rusted and we tried to put the brim machine on a different truck and we found this truck over at Liberty Township. It's old, but it's in good shape. It still runs. And they said they'd sell it to us for a hundred dollars. And I figured for a hundred dollars and we get a couple of years out of it, it's more than worth it.
Okay, I will move to authorize the purchase of a dump truck from the Board of Trustees of Liberty Township, Delaware County, Ohio pursuant to R C five oh five point oh one as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second, but could we amend that to five oh five point one oh one?
Yes, did I miss the one? Five oh five point oh one.
No.
One oh one. See, I can't even do it when I'm told. Sorry. Yes, what she said. And I'll second it. And I'll second what I said, okay?
Mr. Antonets? Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. Bob, I think that whole thing just, um, is a symbol of your whole department. You guys are all, you, you pinch every penny.
Yeah, try to.
I tell you, man, old and broken down.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, he pinches, no, I'm, so I'm glad I clarified myself. He pinches every penny.
The only other thing that I'd like to tell the board is, uh, go geese go for the geese control at Hillmar. I'm going to sign the contract tomorrow. It's seventy-five hundred or eight thousand, something like that. But I just wanted the board to know that I signed that contract tomorrow. If you had any concerns, I'd like to hear them now. The program has been working for the last two years. The geese doppings at Hillmar have been cut way down from what it was.
And I'll say fishing day is much more enjoyable.
Yeah.
Okay, and while you're here, can you discuss the park restrooms?
During the snow event, we had the temperature cranked up in them at eighty-eight degrees. But the wind with that temperature, that quick, froze the whole restrooms. And we have damage to four of the restrooms that we have. It, it froze the pipes solid. It took three days after Christmas before we got them thawed out. And they're still not open. We're still working on them right now, trying to get them back up. We are, we did turn it into an insurance claim. And we got a thousand dollar deductible. Right now, I think it's going to cost about fifteen hundred dollars per restroom to get back up. But we're going to get back up, put insulation around the pipes and even some insulation in the closet where the pipes have broke. So it's gotten more insulation. But I don't think it was extremely the cold, it was the wind that froze them. The wind came. The wind came in the vents on the side of the building and just froze everything solid. So hopefully it will never happen again, but we're still planning on getting them back up and still having them open all winter.
Where the, where the break happened?
Pardon me?
Where did the breaks happen?
It, in, in that utility closet. All, it froze all the copper lines in there completely. And the new restrooms we just purchased for Hillmar and the gardens were designed with insulation and everything, and a heater already in. These are retrofitted because they don't have insulation in the block at all. So they're going to be colder than the new ones anyway because they don't have insulation. When we bought them, they, we was only planning on having them open during the summers.
So can I ask a stupid question or make a recommendation?
Mm-hmm.
Why, why don't we, um, winterize these and shut the water off from the main?
That, that's what we used to do, winterize them every winter. But we wanted to try to keep them open because people do use them in the wintertime if they're open.
We get a lot of walkers out using the paths and it's nice to use the restroom when you're, you're out.
If it becomes a every two or three week situation where they're freezing, I will come back to you and tell you, this ain't going to work with them restroom. But right now, I think we can get them fixed and get them insulated better so they don't freeze no more.
Yep. Supposed to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll turn it over to police.
Good evening. Um, I would ask the board to approve the request to participate in the tuition reimbursement program from Officer Max McCord, who's going after a master of public administration at Liberty University with a concentration in disaster management program. And if approved, he would be eligible for a total of $6,000 per calendar year.
Okay, I'll move to approve the tuition reimbursement for Officer Maxwell McCord for a master's degree of public administration with a concentration in disaster management from Liberty University per Article 15, tuition reimbursement in the Ohio's Patrolmen's Benevolent Association Union Agreement. Reimbursement will be based upon final grades. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonet?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Next, I would ask for acceptance of a very generous donation from Anna and Donald Sleeper for $200. And they're designating this to go to the Operation Genoa Cares project that we launched to gather some care packages for our troops who are stationed overseas, the deputy chief's son and one of our officers. And this is to defray the mailing costs. When you look up at the screen, you can see, we put this up on our Facebook page. This is them receiving the first shipment just prior to Christmas. The timing was great. And, and a lot of these young soldiers are not getting a whole lot from back home. I mean, they get letters and whatever else, but not the amount of items we got. And it goes to speak of just the amazing generosity of the residents in Genoa Township and the businesses and everybody that participated. We just thank everybody for that.
That's awesome. Thanks for sharing the pictures.
And we still have more boxes to send.
Very good. So I'll move to graciously accept a donation from Anna and Donald Sleeper in the amount of $200 to Operation Genoa Cares. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonet?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Chief, if I could suggest, um, I stopped over there the other day and there were a few items that couldn't be sent because they didn't meet the criteria. If there would be a way to put a list somewhere that said, these are the items they want or need, these items we cannot take, that might be helpful.
Yeah, and I think we put that out there before, that basically it's non-perishable items, no liquids.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, they want games and socks or whatever, but, um, just basically no non-liquids, but we can put something out again.
A reminder, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And we'll keep doing it as long as we receive donations. I know they're there till later this year, so we'll keep sending it. Lastly, I just, quick announcement that we are taking signups for Citizen Police Academy, starting, uh, I believe in March. And this time, we're adding back since, since COVID, um, we're adding back the jail tour and the range where you get to shoot the firearms. So we'd love to have as many people as possible sign up for that. I think Fire is doing signups right now, too. Ours is more fun, obviously, but I encourage also to sign up, sign up for Fire, so that's all I have.
You too. Thank you, chief. Since two pons this year, do you have anything? Yes, he does.
Uh, just on a quick note, we, we had, again, a very, very successful toy and food drive this year. Thanks go to Lisa, our administrative assistant, and a handful of members from the union. Well, I guess it's newly appointed office manager who coordinate all the efforts and get all the, these donated items to us. Mark, you were in the, the room the other night. We still have a sizable amount of leftovers that we have, a couple of organizations that we give those to, to help people out throughout the year. But the amount of stuff that we gave out this year is unbelievable. And again, it's just been another amazing year. And again, to, to mirror what Chief Gamble said, the generosity of the residents of Genoa Township just seems to know no limits and we're very thankful for that. It allows us to help a lot of people. So that's all I had.
Very good, thank you. Anything else? All right, I'll move to announcements. On January 11th, the Police Advisory Board is meeting. January 17th, Zoning Commission. January 12th, the Communications Advisory Committee. January 16th, the offices will be closed for Martin Luther King Day. On January 24th, the Board of Zoning Appeals will meet. And February 1st, Parks Advisory Committee meeting. And the next regular trustee meeting will be February 2nd, 2023, at 6:30 PM. There was no more business before the board, so I'll move to adjourn at 7:58 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Antonet?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. We are now adjourned at 8:50.